I wanted to welcome you to the May 27, 2021 Regular Board Work Session. I am going to call us to order for roll call. We have all of our directors in attendance, attending virtually. And we have a meeting agenda, but I wanted to, we lately converted this meeting to virtual, which I'll try to touch on in a moment, but with that, I I would personally propose that we trim the agenda by removing the instructional highlights out of the presentations. We'll put it on a future agenda item. In addition, I wanted to clarify that under action items, C1 Policy Review, that's labeled First Reading. We actually have a policy to take action on. That's Policy INDB Flag Displays and Salutes. And the remaining policies, IIBGA Electronic Communication Systems, CBA Qualifications and Duties of the Superintendent, JFCA Student Dress and Grooming, and GBCA Staff Relatives Dress. All of those are submitted for first reading. And so those policies are here for us to review. We can discuss them. But those would be approved in a, in a, our next board business meeting or considered for approval in our next board business meeting. So those are my comments about the agenda. But I entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda as Chair Blake Peterson indicated.
Second.
It's moved by Matt, second by Chris to approve the meeting agenda with the postponement of our instructional highlights and the clarification and the policy discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Was that opposition? Robin, sorry. Was that an a or an i?
No, I support.
Okay, okay. Okay, then we have an agenda. And that will move us through the instructional highlights. And so we have a return to learn update, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Chair. Time has been set aside tonight for the administration to provide the board with an overview of the latest health safety metrics and an update on limited in-person instruction and hybrid. Sarah, were you going to present screen?
I can do that. Hang on just a second. I had to pull it up.
Thank you. This will be pretty straightforward tonight, Chair. Sarah, I can't see your screen. I'm not sure if everybody else can. Okay. If you guys didn't hear that, she said she was freezing up.
Sarah, I have the presentation up if you want me to share it.
Sarah Tracy volunteered to share it if you'd like, because I'm speaking through a wall. For those who can't hear, she might be able to hear me. Oh, never mind. We're up and running. Okay, if you want to advance to slide two, Sarah, we will be good to go. It appears that Sarah's computer is running slowly. Chair, if you would like, I can summarize what I was going to share with you. It is submitted as a record. I can just go through that without display.
Please, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll do. On the second slide, what you'll see is the normal 14-day average that I show you each time. The metrics are all trending again very positively. We're in the green zone in both case count and positivity rate. And in the third slide, you'll also see that we are in the green zone for continuing hybrid, no changes, no worries, no adjustments. I did introduce a fourth slide or a third slide this time that shows the exposures within the district, and I'll summarize that for the board as well. We are a week behind in these metrics, so they come a week late from the MESD and the Oregon Health Authority. So so far confirmed cases in the district with 11,500 total, about 7, 6,000 attending in person. We had 50 COVID cases for students, and we've had 27 from staff. What you'll also see on the website, if you went to that link, a breakdown by school as well as the fluctuations of positivity rates, case counts, et cetera. It's a new website we put up this week. We have done well compared to other districts. Ben had to shut down because they had such a high rate and such high quarantines. We are not in that same position, and none of these cases have been proven to spread via our contact tracing. So we have this as our backup, spread between students or between staff and students in our buildings, but they have all, all the exposures have happened outside of school. So that's the slide you did not get to see this week, but it is on our website for parents to view anytime they want.
I have a question. Were the exposure from staff, were they, did they have the opportunity to get vaccinated?
All staff had the opportunity to get vaccinated prior to spring break. And again, I should reiterate that these exposures, staff, oh, pardon me, Myra.
Sorry, didn't they get the opportunity to get vaccinated before they even returned to buildings?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the clarification. And I will, I should also clarify again. All of these exposures have been proven to happen in their lives outside of school, not at school.
Any other questions, Mr. Cook?
I have nothing else for you, Chair.
Great. Thanks, John. All right, so next up on our agenda is a policy review. This is an action item, so this is where we're going to split INDB Flag Displays and Salutes. So in a moment, we'll, we'll discuss the policy and for the sake of public awareness and, and also to explain how I intend to facilitate this action item for my fellow directors. I want to provide a little bit of background information about how this policy came to, to our consideration today. And I, and I will do that shortly. But there's a matter of greater urgency that I feel the need to address, and that is the conduct of certain individuals toward my colleagues on the board. Two of my fellow directors received implicit and explicit threats related to this policy and the ideas that are contained therein. In addition, district staff, particularly the district's reception team, received threatening and profane communication. This conduct is abhorrent. It's inexcusable, and it's unwelcome. To that degree, I feel confident speaking on behalf of the board. And what I'm going to add now is a deeply personal reflection. As grossly misguided as these threats and intimidations are, they are equally misdirected. I'm the board chair. And as such, it's my prerogative to appoint my colleagues who sit on the board with me to various committee assignments, and that's what I've done. I appointed the Policy Review Committee that reviewed this policy and proposed these edits. I picked the team, and I picked them by hand. So if you take issue with my committee, then your grievance is with me. So come, come at me. You need not fire so indiscriminately. You have your target. Here I am. My cell phone number, published on the district website since 2017, is 503-348-5111. I'll say it again. I'll say it slowly so you can write it down. 503-348-5111. That is the only number I have. That is the same number that my wife texts me to ask me to pick up milk on the way home from baseball practice. Same number I communicate with superintendent. It's the same number that I text my son from, tell him that I love him. And I'm proud of him, and I'm praying for him when he goes to school. Do you understand? You have access, privileged access, to these directors on the board. To the policy that confuses you and the curriculum that concerns you and the budget that doesn't make sense to you, you have access. And it's unfettered, and it's even free. I pay the phone bill. You don't even pay for it, and you don't pay any of us who are doing this work, none of us. Because that's representative government. And representative government still works. So you can call me, and we'll talk, and you can ask questions, and I'll do my best to answer them. And if I don't know the answer, then I'll tell you I don't know, and I'll get back to you. You can vent your frustrations. We can navigate solutions together. You can talk, and I will listen. And the way this works is if I don't listen, then eventually you can, you can fire me. You can fire me in a ballot box. You can find somebody else whose ideas are more compelling, more attractive to you, and you can put them in a seat, and they can try it out. And maybe you'll get the decision wrong. Maybe you chose wrong with me. Well, in four years, you get to switch me out. Because that's how government works. I picked the Policy Review Committee because they collectively and individually see the world differently than I do. And I'm not threatened by that. I'm not threatened by their ideas because they are ideas. And in this free country, and at the intersection of education, no less, we're not threatened by ideas. We celebrate them. We love them. Because we debate them, we consider them, criticize them, we test them, sometimes we even reject them. But in the end, by this process, we discover our common ground, and sometimes that common ground is, is a huge swath of land. And sometimes that common ground is so narrow, it's a land bridge over a sea of division. But we pursue the common ground. To believe in the beauty of this country is to believe fundamentally in the beauty of diverse voices, experiences, beliefs, values, traditions, even failures, butting up against each other to produce a vibrant, evolving, and yet still rooted distinctly American identity. E Pluribus Unum. Out of many, one. It's emblazoned on our currency. It's our national motto. That is distinctly American. What is un-American is the idea that threats and intimidation is somehow more palatable than democracy. I listened to your phone calls. I saw the social media posts emblazoned with the American flag, and I read the comments. And what I saw and heard were cowards who hide behind a flag they don't even understand. I know something of that flag. I too salute that flag, but I also wore it. I wore it on my sleeve in places of war and strife and fear and courage and sacrifice. I wore the flag. And even though I wore it, I didn't wear it like, like others did. In just a few days on Memorial Day, as with every day, I will remember a number of my West Point classmates and very dear friends who I would love to see again, who wore that flag on their caskets. The country they fought for, the country they died for, the country they lived for, is not a country of fear. It is not a country of division. It is a country unthreatened by ideas forged in our diversity and committed to the collective pursuit of a more perfect union. The vast majority of those who engage the board understand this perfectly, from those who are, who are vehemently in support of the policy to those who are distinctly opposed. We received civil, informed, invaluable perspective on the issue that we are soon to discuss. So this comment isn't for you, but to those who resort to threats and intimidation, I am here to assure you that you have no representation on this board because treachery has no representation on the flag you hide behind. Threats, intimidation, harassment are unacceptable and unwelcome. And if you take issue with that, you give me a call. Like the resource briefly for five minutes, and we'll return to discussing vote on the policy. So we'll join back at 6:20. Let me see Director Sowers' video. We'll, we'll get started. Thanks, Rob. All right, to introduce this, this policy, wanted to provide a little bit of background. Policy INDB Flag Displays and Salutes came to the Policy Review Committee for review on, on April 1. After review, which was a, a review. The review was based on a statutory oversight that the policy had related to the display of the prisoner of war missing an action flag that is statutorily required but was omitted from our policy, not deliberately, but just omitted. So Oregon School Boards Association, to whom we pay a subscription service to, to help us review our policies through a legal team, recommended that we make that addition. It's my understanding, if I'm ever flawed here, that the committee or somebody who's better informed can certainly jump in, but in addition to that proposal, the Policy Review Committee also proposed additional ideas of flying additional flags as well as a classroom requirement, a land acknowledgement, and that students should learn the Black National Anthem. So that's the policy proposal that's in front of the board for consideration today. The way that I see this moving toward action is that, well, what I'd like is to get a motion and a second on the table, so that, that will bring the the agenda item to us, bring the action item in front of us, and then I'd like to just provide each director an opportunity to express their convictions related to the policy, if they choose to. Those comments can be whatever you want them to be. They be civil, of course, but but they can be whatever, whatever you want to say, and it can be as short or, or you can even say nothing at all if you prefer, but in the end, we're going to bring this to a vote and, and so decide this action toward one resolution or another's. With that, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Flag Displays and Salutes policy as amended.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Rob, and second by Amanda to approve the policy as it's presented to the board with, with those edits that I clarified. So with that, I will open the discussion and I will start with those who brought the, the policy to action. Robin, start with you.
So I have prepared a statement because I'm really exhausted of going back and forth. So I'm going to read my statement, and this is all I'm going to say. So as a board member, I would like to apologize for our, to our students for this traumatic experience. All students deserve to be seen, heard, and respected. Your identities and your human rights should not be up for a public debate. The intention of this policy is to create safe welcoming, inclusive spaces for all students. And to do that, we must first accept that not all students in this district have the privilege to feeling safe and represented in the classroom environment. We must accept and understand that institutional racism and oppression is real so that we can take the steps to eradicate them from our schools. The United States is not perfect. Under the American flag, there is a history of attempted genocide of Native Americans, stolen land, broken treaties, Native American boarding schools, enslavement of Black people, segregation, Jim Crow, police brutality, Japanese internment camps, Chinese Exclusion Acts, forced acts of sterilization, anti-LGBTQ laws, exploitation of migrant workers, and other human rights violations at the Southern border, just to name a few. These actions are real impacts that impact our students every single day. At school, we see this reflected in the racial disparities in academic achievement, attendance, and discipline. And it is our job as leaders to take a stance and combat institutional racism and oppression. And before I even got appointed to this board, you released a statement, a commitment to addressing institutional racism, which reads confronting white supremacy, nationalism, and racial violence, be it emotional, mental, or physical, at every level of our district. Creating identity reaffirming spaces creates safer learning environments for children, and that is what we thought when we were amending this policy. This policy includes a progressive pride flag, which would literally save lives. According to a report released this month by the Trevor Project, that even just one accepting adult in an LGBTQ child's life can lower their attempted risk of suicide by 40%. It has the Black Lives Matter flag, which is a modern day civil rights movement. There is a lot of misinformation and fear about Black Lives Matter, and it's important to remember that every civil rights movement in this nation and its leaders were misrepresented in their time, including Martin Luther King Jr., who was one of the most hated men in America. There is also a land acknowledgement, which will help students understand the history of the United States and the impacts of colonialization. And finally, the Black National Anthem Lift Every Voice and Sing is a hymn written as a poet by James Weldon Johnson in 1900 and set to the music of his brother Jay Rosamund Johnson for the anniversary of Abraham Lincoln's birthday in 1905. It's a song of hope and resiliency, and it is as American as apple pie. And our students should be learning our history, our diverse history in all its forms. And I would like to play just two minutes of this song so people can hear it and know what this is about. So this policy isn't perfect. It's meant to be amended upon. It's meant to be inclusive. I received an email, and there was an individual interested in the autism flag. I say yes, and yes, and yes. And we have a very diverse American history, and I think that it should all be represented. And for those who are concerned about our teachers not understanding this, I would just invite you to look at the social media page of the Gresham Barlow Education Association and look at all the teachers who came out in support for Black Lives Matter. And that this is something that we are ready to take on. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Amanda?
Hi. Um, well, I wrote sort of a statement online. Kind of went viral a little bit, but just to kind of include why, you know, we wanted to go about this work, but to add to it, I mean, I just kind of want to echo a lot of things that Rob had already said. You know, as a board member, I would like to extend my apologies to any Black and LGBTQ plus families that have felt traumatized by this process. I've been traumatized this past week myself, but you know, you're still seen and valued in my eyes. And ultimately, all I really wanted to do was just make public schools safer and more welcoming for you than they ever were for me growing up. I've received a lot of emails from white folks trying to explain racism to me, even though they've never experienced racism in my, in their lives. I know this because if they had experienced racism, they wouldn't be saying half the things they say to me already. And this is also what I mean by white supremacy culture in itself. You have not lived my life, and I have not lived your life. I don't explain your life to you. But BIPOC and LGBTQ plus people have always had their lives explained to them by other people. We've had our histories erased, and we're told to celebrate colonialism, which is, again, still white supremacy culture in itself. As a board, we stated that we were committed to eliminating institutional racism last June, and from my experience, I feel like we have done very little work to do so. I take pride in being a hardworking person, and this lack of work for our kids and families is personally frustrating for me. Um, I understand that we live in a society where tactics of fear and violence are truly acts of terrorism. And terrorism is identified in the dictionary as the unlawful use of violence and intimidation, especially against civilians in the pursuit of political aims. The political aim in this situation is to maintain the status quo, even though we are a, even though Gresham is quickly changing demographically, like whether you like it or not, Gresham is the fastest growing Black community in Oregon. No fear tactics is going to stop anyone from existing. The status quo is honoring that Oregon was originally a whites-only territory, and we fail our community if we do not serve every single person. I do not judge people for their identities, which they were born and they cannot control. However, opponents are so scared of black and trans folks. I have never seen so many people up in arms over simple representation. I shouldn't be surprised, but I am. But, um, the truth is, we're all just trying to live. We want to live comfortably, free from trauma. We want to live and feel seen, it's human nature. And that is my political agenda. And if that bothers you, then I invite you to do some more soul searching for yourself. It's never too late to do that. That's it.
Um, Matt?
Chris is part of the committee on this. Did we want Chris to go first? Because I thought we were going to have the committee members go. I can go, it's up to Chris.
I, I, I have no opinion there. Chris, would you like to, or?
Go ahead, Matt, if you're ready.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, first I'd like to echo one thing that Blake had indicated earlier. You know, it's just, why can't we disagree respectfully? There's nothing wrong with that. Having said that, Robyn and Amanda, thank you for your, your positions and it's actually valuable information. So adding specific social media movement flags to the policy does not promote equity. As some have indicated, it actually creates an exclusionary policy. Further, which progressive pride flag is the policy reference? There are at least eleven known variations. Black Lives Matter flags also have many variations. The flag of the United States of America is sufficient because it represents all. It represents our freedom of speech and our freedom to congregate and make things right. Yes, we're not a perfect union, as has been said a couple of times. But the idea is to have this dialogue respectfully and we can make it a more perfect union. It does, it doesn't, I do not oppose allowing other flags to fly once in a while, but it has to be done in an educational forum. The proposed policy is flawed and unacceptable in its current format. There was a district in the eastern part of the United States that flew the Black Lives Matter flag for a period of time. And they provided an FAQ on their website to help inform the decision of why they flew the flag. One section that I thought was really important of the FAQ brings up the importance of education in these types of matters. So I've been to read it. Raising the Black Lives Matter flags recognizes the value of black lives. The United States' history includes slavery and denial of civil rights to black citizens. And we continue to address the impact of system racism today. Our students, staff and families live in a global society. And issues impacting the society are part of education in our schools. Part of preparing to be a citizen of the world is recognizing where injustices and biases are present. And we want classrooms to be places where students engage in dialogues on those difficult topics so that they may better prepare, be prepared to advocate for justice. So in conclusion, the flag policy that is inclusive of all and provides an educational opportunity to discuss the matter would be much better suited to meeting the equity goals of the Gresham Barlow School District. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. Um. Hang on just a second. So I am on the Policy Advisory Committee with Amanda and Robin. And we were, I have asked that this be brought forward because we were missing the National League of Families PLW MIA flag designation that was put into place. Um. We then had numerous other additions that were requested at that time. When we were looking at some of it, as Mr. O'Connell said, the progressive pride flag had multiple variations. There was some question about how the Black Lives Matter flag would be placed as well as land acknowledgement and the hymn that is the Lift Every Voice and Sing. Doing some research and looking up these parts, it is a beautiful song. It does reference, because it's written as a hymn, um, plenty of God in part of it. We had some questions that we asked our teachers about whether or not they currently had some of these items in their classroom. We have not ever said that they cannot have them. We have several teachers who have a variety of things in their classroom that they choose to display and be allies to the students. They have safe space posters, they have Black Lives Matter, they have pride flags, they have flags that represent the students that are in their classroom. My concerns when we brought this forward are that it was strained into what is considered operational parts. The board should not be telling staff what they have to put into their classrooms. The original policy was based on federal law and state law. It's not a policy that I've agreed with because it's fate, the federal and state telling us what we have to put in our classrooms. The part that Blake did leave off is also when OSB came back with this, is it included also if there was a request by a sovereign tribal government that we'd include their flag flying on our government property. So with, with all of that, I think there are other ways that we can accomplish the learning, the education, the ethnic studies, the support of our students and making sure that our teachers are prepared in ways that they can continue the conversation. But I think having this be a mandatory item is not the way to go. As we saw from the number of people that were up and down on this, misinformation about it, unclear about it, having it come in, if we place this in policy, it immediately goes into effect. And I don't think that this is an appropriate way to do this. I think that there are other ways that we can meet the needs. And I'm not quite sure what document has been referenced that we put in. We had discussion in June of two thousand twenty about institutional racism, but I don't know that we ever finished that. We were going to come back to it and actually complete it. So we've done some work with that. So we are on a journey with this and I have echoed what some of the other board members have said as well. I'm absolutely dismayed and horrified at the attacks that were presented on to, to our board members that are not acceptable in conversation that we have about board policy, school options and things that we have for our students. So with that, I think I'll finish, but I am not in agreement with the changes that are being proposed outside of the legal requirements that we have for what items are supposed to be displayed at our schools.
Carla, do you, would you like to say? Carla's, I think, I don't think it quite unmuted. Still, still muted, okay.
I'm ready. So I've listened and I applaud everybody's that they, there's just they, we all really want the same thing and it's coming to our ways in many, many ways. And so I, I do applaud the board on the, 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 um, that, that we're not one at all, we're all together. And I think we really have to think about that and talk about that. And, and actually what just came up to me as well is that Memorial Day is coming over this weekend. And for the, the years that I've been in Gresham, we have had little support there. So it, to my mind, it's, it's part of the, the, the policies and practices and things that are just ready to be worked on and come to better ways of doing and helping others. I'm not too part, or too, um, I just think we're, we've got a great group and we need to remend, remind, remend ourselves of that. And we need to be that. And that's it.
Okay, Myra?
I did not refer a statement. This is, I've been thinking a lot about this, I've been reflecting a lot.
I don't know why you do that.
Waiting for.
Chris?
Okay, um, so I, I did not refer a statement. I did have a discussion about this with my family. I have shared that I live in a multi-generational home, so three, four generations are in the house. I grew up in South Central Los Angeles singing Lift Every Voice and Sing. I grew up with, with a family of immigrants, my parents are both immigrants. So I do believe that I lead with conviction and with heart. And I will stand against every decision that I make. Because my experience and my knowledge as an educator is what informs those decisions. My experience as a student in Oregon, my experience as a brown educator here in Gresham, and now as a board member. I know well what racism, discrimination and oppression looks like. I have experienced it and I have witnessed my kids experiencing it. And when I say my kids, I don't just mean my students. I mean the two children that I live with. And it's heartbreaking. And I want to tell teachers, the teachers who are here right now and the administrators that are here now, that are listening, that you do have the right to display safe zone triangles in your offices and Black Lives Matter signs in your offices and wear your Vídeo de Guadalupe if you want to, when you're teaching about Mexican history. Like, that's you, that's who you are. Teaching is political. Teaching is very political and silence is a political statement. And I am the last person who stays silent. If I give up my time, the time that I could be spending with my family to do this, to serve on the board, is because I refuse to stay silent. And I refuse to have my students continuing to experience the same oppression and the same racism that I experienced and that I witnessed experiencing as a teacher. So I'm not going to do that. However, I don't think that flags are going to make a difference. Our students know when we care about them. Our students know who their allies, their true allies are. And I'm not going to be a part of creating a culture of fake allies. I'm not going to do that. So your kids, your students, when I say your kids, I mean your students, they should know that you're an ally. And you should not have our permission and we should not have to make it a mandatory for you to let your kids know that you care about them and for your kids to know that you're an ally and that you will stand up for them. They should know that by now. And if they don't, then you need to check yourself. Because that is not something that should, that we should tell you to do. If you go into teaching is because you care. If you go into any part of education is because you really care about our kids. Our kids feel it, they know it. So in your classroom, you should feel welcome and you should feel safe to read in Lakesh, to have a land acknowledgement, to have a pride flag or the safe zone triangle, to have whatever symbol you want. However, when you do, make sure that you have told your kids why. Educate them, let them have those Socratic seminars, let them have those critical discussions so that they know what they stand for. So that they know what you stand for. Don't make us tell you what to do. You're a professional. You're an adult. And we will support you because we did say that we are here to dismantle systems of racism. So we are going to support you, but you have to believe it. Because we don't want you to do anything fake. That isn't going to help anybody. Chair, I'm done.
Okay. Thanks, Myra. Um, I, I entered this, this conversation with serious reservations about, about this policy language. I did deliberately seek out people who might see the world differently than I do and, and I, I particularly how to support students of color better. And and those who reviewed this policy universally didn't, didn't believe that flying the flags was the best way. And I realized that I don't have a representative group. And, and I, I commit to seeking more voices and more perspective. But what they did talk about was representative curriculum. What they did talk about were other things that were, we are striving to accomplish. But but I think there are valid perspectives within our community that Black Lives Matter flag in particular is representative organization with, with clear objectives. Some of those are pronouncedly not political objectives. And, and I think it's inappropriate for us to to side with an organization. I, I think the optimal solution for me is that our students are very aware of the movement, its power, its aims, its successes. But I think the real mark of success is if our students can also think critically about the movements even of our day, the movements of our history. Because I think critical thinkers are what we need to raise more than anything right now. And and so I, I also, I joined my colleagues who are not supportive of this policy. But I am sincerely appreciative of the conversations it's opened up for me to help me be a better board member, to be a better neighbor. And, and I look forward to future and further conversations with, with those who, who we seek to support, which is all of our students, to provide them a safe place and, and provide them a place of equal opportunity, access to opportunity. So that's, that's where I stand on it. And I appreciate the stability of my colleagues and the conviction and the sincerity more than anything. So with that, there be no other discussion. It's been moved, moved by Robin, second by Amanda to approve this policy as it's been proposed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Aye.
And I, and I would like clarification on what exactly, is it the Black Lives Matter flag? Or is it LGBTQ communities that you don't support? Like, which one is it? Or is it both?
I think that's a misrepresentation, what I just said.
It's a misrepresentation at all because LGBTQ flag, Black Lives Matter flags, they're different. And I would like to see from the board if there is ways to amend this policy to make it more palatable to this community. What would you think needs to be excluded?
We agreed to bring this policy forward and have discussion and call for a vote.
Before we go into the discussion, I had Robin down as a yes and then I didn't catch what, if Amanda voted.
It was a yes to my, yep.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I didn't catch it, so, okay, thank you.
But I think, I think that this is important for our community to know. Regardless, okay, we have the vote.
Point of order, Chair, this is not part of the agenda.
Now, no, it's, we're still talking about.
No, vote's over.
Robin, you said you were the one that.
Vote's over.
We are still talking about this policy. We are, we are still talking about this policy. And it would be good to know what exactly this board opposes. Is it Black Lives Matter, LGBTQ, land acknowledgement? Or is it, what was the third thing?
Lift every voice and sing. We're going to adjourn, we're going to adjourn for five minutes because this agenda item is.
I think that is, I think that is entirely disrespectful, entirely disrespectful.
It's not part of the agenda, we've already voted on this, we're done.
I would like our community to know, and Matt, you are not the chair. I would like.
I have said that this agenda item is determined with a vote.
And so do I, and so do I. And I would just like our community to know the reason BLM.
Then they are welcome to contact me and any of our colleagues. Director Stowers, this is wildly inappropriate.
Or it is not wildly inappropriate.
It is, and we are recessing for ten minutes.
The way that this.
We'll be back at seven PM, thank you, everybody.
The way that this board has. The way that this board has decided to go about deciding what is appropriate and what is not appropriate is wildly inappropriate. I do not agree 100% with what they had said, of course. But I think our communities need to know exactly, because this policy was so complex, exactly what these community members have a problem with. Black Lives Matter, LGBTQ, land acknowledgement, or the Black National Anthem. I think it's going to be very important to understand where your values are as a community. Because you can't say that when you said that you don't approve this policy, what the reasons are, because it was so complex. And I think our community deserves to know that.
Institutional racism is very strong within Gresham, and I apologize to all of the students who have to experience it. That huge gesture by our board in trying to present the, a more inclusive perspective was inspiring at first. I was like, oh, maybe he understands what Gresham Barlow School District is really going through, what our students are going through. Maybe he cares about our about our diverse student population. But actions speak louder than words, and I would wholeheartedly like to demonstrate and to show to the community that when you vote a certain way, you are showing your values. You can say whatever it is you want to say. You can say you support our diverse communities. You can really say that you care about our students. And when your actions demonstrate the opposite, this is a point for you to take action and to understand that this is this is what it is. And Carla, you can turn off your camera. There is a video button down at the bottom of your Zoom, and it looks like a camera, and you can click it.
It's down at the bottom?
Thank you. We were unable to locate that. It's an Apple. It works differently. Couldn't find it.
Okay, when I see folks' videos, we'll reconvene. Okay. We have additional agenda item with the with additional policies that are up for first reading. But before we get moving, I want to reiterate to the board that all of us unanimously in February agreed to operate by our operating agreements with one another. In those operating agreements, which is dictated by policy, we also follow Robert's Rules of Order.
No, we don't.
If we're incapable of, if we're incapable of following the rules of order, then you'll be expelled from the meeting.
No, we don't. We have never followed Robert's Rules of Order from the beginning, and we have not followed it from the beginning of this procession. And if you want to start to follow Robert's Rules of Order, that is something that you are allowed to do, but we have not done it. So I understand that that is your goal, but to say that we operate by that, and that we've been operated by that by the beginning of the reason, the meeting, that has never happened. I just want to point that out. I understand that it's your goal, but you need to understand Robert's Rules of Order before you say that we're operating from it.
I agree that you're not operating by it. Absolutely concur with you there.
None of us have been operating by it.
Then you're in violation of your own policy, Director Stowers.
You're in violation of your policy, because we.
I appreciate you informing me. I'm so grateful that you yourself.
Operating by it.
Thank you, Director Stowers, for bringing it forward 10 months into your tenure. That's super helpful. Thank you.
And you've been here four years, and you still have not learned how to operate by it.
We have four policies for first reading. Is there any discussion about these policies? I'd ask Director Howitt to please, you can clarify anything that came out of the policy.
The electronics communication system was pretty straightforward. We had one item that was added and a couple of other things that were removed. The items in red. There was nothing else that was changed in that. That one was pretty straight up. The student dress and grooming. We wanted to make sure that it just reflected that it wasn't his or her, that it was the student as well as the individual. And there wasn't anything that was done with that. There was a question about some of the information that Portland Public has with theirs that was part of their student handbook, which we also have as part of our student handbook as well. On the staff religious dress, we took out that staff was allowed to wear a religious attire in accordance with their religious beliefs. We struck out the sincerely held. We also took out that the district retained authority to specify guidelines and administrative regulations. So we gave staff their freedom with their religious dress to use it as they wanted to. The other one that was brought forward was the superintendent qualifications and duties of the superintendent. And that had a couple of things that were added to it, that the response from OSBA had us question whether or not they should be in another policy, and how we would be able to actually measure whether or not those were happening. Under the position purpose, it was added that schools are inherently racist institutions committed to collaborate and work with the board to eliminate white supremacy culture in Gresham Barlow Schools. On the standards for superintendent performance, it was suggested by OSBA that on paragraph three, that that information be put into the GCL-GDL policy, which is where training occurs and professional development for staff. And they had a question about what proper equity training means. That's somewhat of a subjective statement, and how would you measure and support that? And then finally, the last part, the very last sentence, under demonstrating an uncompromising commitment to confronting and dismantling white supremacy. And the response from OSBA is you could get pushback from that, but it would be in there, and it would be something that would be part of the superintendent demonstration and part of their evaluation. And we would need to have this revised, because they have loosened the license requirements. They have made it where if you're a superintendent someplace else, you don't have to go through hoops to be a superintendent in Oregon, which was something that our current superintendent had to do. She was National Superintendent of the Year, came here. Oregon said, that's nice. And she had to go through a year's worth of superintendent training to be a superintendent. So they have changed that. And they have also said that the board may take steps to assist an individual in qualifying to be a superintendent. And we do not have to use the very restricted teacher standards and practices. And I believe Mr. Hugh also had some insight into that. I believe he's been part of the standards. Mr. Hugh or Mr. Cook on the teacher standard practices and practices around superintendents.
That would be, that would be me. I'm on the TSPC Fair Dismissal Board, but a lot of these changes to the superintendent license has to do with some of the changes within the last year, based on the new executive director and the ability for out-of-state superintendents qualify for Oregon licensure.
Okay, is there any discussion about these policies?
Yes. Their dress. Amanda, go first.
Oh, sorry. I had a question. Who submitted these questions to OSBA?
It was submitted by Myra, Myrna, Myrna, sorry, Myrna, after the meeting. And it goes to them as part of review. I did not submit them to them for review. It went from the committee secretaries, which would be either Sarah or Myrna, that OSBA for review. As did the other policy changes.
Alrighty, awesome. So just to, I wanted to add this to our, because you know, we're hiring a new superintendent, and I think it's really important that we hire a a superintendent with a robust equity lens, which is why I felt like it was really important to include this language. And I am more than happy to define white supremacy culture and what that looks like in our schools, if there's any reservations there. If anyone wants to work with me on that, it'd be fantastic. And equity training, I feel like OSBA, they have been doing their own set of equity training. I've been to it recently because of the pandemic. But I wouldn't mind collaborating on what that would look like either. I think it's very important that we keep these sentiments in this policy moving forward. And I am more than happy, like I said, to define everything that we added to it.
And I think it would be great if you made these things concrete, because everyone has different definitions of what these are. So if you could be more specific, it would be helpful. And also keep in mind that each state has different definitions of these and what equity looks like. So the more specific you can be and concrete, the better.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd love to work on that. Thank you.
And can I just get some clarification on the equity training? Currently, and I believe Mr. Cook, we don't use Oregon School Board Association for staff training. That's school board training. And so what training is it that staff currently gets for their equity training?
We use the Center for Equity and Inclusion cohort training by building, staff volunteer and a part of it, and they use building leadership as well, principals help lead their teams. James is also well-versed in this, Director Howitt. James, you, pardon me.
We've had a partnership with the Center for Equity and Inclusion for the last six years, where we've had staff from individual buildings, licensed staff, classified staff, and administrative staff go through training. So each building, you know, are working to have an equity team at the building level. We're not quite through with all of our buildings. After six years, we've got about two-thirds of our buildings who have had significant training to, you know, I would say some have just started with some of the training, but it's usually a cohort of four or five individuals from a building, and it can be from one year to three years of time. But we're going into year seven. I think we have identified our next cohort of individuals for the 2021, 22 school year.
I just want to point out that we did a training with Center for Equity and Inclusion, and I thought that they were very, very, very inappropriate, because what they did was they provided training, and they never mentioned the institutional impacts of what racism is. Institutional racism and the impacts are real and measurable, and that they provided training that really centered white fragility and the experience. And what you got from that is we have a lot of school highlights that don't know how to disaggregate racial impacts within our educational system. And I think that is very dangerous. When you say to people who don't understand entirely what racial equity is, and then you give them a training to say that they do understand what racial equity is, then they start making decisions and using racial equity as a leverage for those decisions. And I think that is really, really, really dangerous and highly inappropriate. Aside from that entirely, like there is the dress code, which did not address the majority of concerns that were brought up within the policy committee. We wanted to make this dress code really consistent among all of our schools. And we requested that this district code and policy applies to all Gresham Barlow Schools K through 12. So that was something that was included. And that was a statement that was supposed to be included in the first sentence, that this district dress code policy applies to all schools in Gresham Barlow School District K through 12. that this district dress code policy applies to all schools in Gresham Barlow School District K through 12. We recommended that we delete, "Dress and grooming standards may be established by school authorities as a requirement for participation in the school activity program." And also, item five, which states, "Dress and grooming that disrupts the learning environment shall not be permitted," because it was just redundant language. But we requested that that be replaced with, "Schools must be suitable for all scheduled classroom activities, including physical education, science labs, woodshop, and other activities where unique hazards exist. And also specialized courses may require specialized attire such as sports uniforms or safety gear." So the school dress code did not, the, the policy that was presented did not represent the conversation that we originally had.
I know that we did have some of the comments about that, about the specific things where you would have a health issue, safety issue. If you were in a woodshop class, you needed to wear the appropriate gear. I do have a question, though, about putting in that it applies to all students K-12. Our policies apply to all students K-12. We don't have an elementary policy and a middle school policy and a high school policy. The policy is the policy. So if there's something in here that doesn't apply to elementary school, I'm not seeing it.
Let me clarify to you, Chris.
Okay.
Even though you've been on the board for 20 years, you need to understand that every school-
I would like for you, I would like for you to treat me with a little bit more respect. So there is a student handbook that may have information that the student handbook is based on this policy.
There's a student handbook and every school has had their own dress code policy for the past 20 years since you've been on the board. It was just clarification.
No, it's inaccurate.
Every school has its own dress code policy. Is that accurate or not?
No, it is not, because the only policy, big P policy, JFCA, that's the only policy we have. That policy is referenced when it's in a student handbook and when they have it.
You, you misunderstand because item number three on this policy says, "Dress code and grooming, grooming standards may be established by school authorities as requirement for participation in school program activities." So dress code standards are being specified and, and set by this specific school. So that's what you've been dealing with for the last 20 years.
Most likely because metal shop and auto shop are not in the elementary school. That would be a school-specific thing, so.
Not even, Chris. Like what's been, what you have been dealing with is you have been sexualizing young women by saying like, you shouldn't wear skirts this short. You shouldn't show this. You shouldn't show that.
Don't put words in my mouth. Don't put words in my mouth.
That's been what has been reflected within our individual school policies. You've been criminalizing students as well by the fact of wearing hoodies and by saying like, you shouldn't wear hoodies. This is not appropriate attire. And schools have been setting these standards. And so as we've been sexualizing and criminalizing our students based on individual school standards, we've had a policy that has been here at the district level that has been fairly generic that we have been following back on. And what this policy does right here is it sets consistent standards among the schools that says, "Cover yourself. Make sure that we are safe." And that is our school policy, period. It's not getting into the details of what girls are wearing or what boys are wearing and really making sure that our policies are set in very consistent and very equitable standards that are, that are consistent throughout our district. And so therefore, our students will not be subjected to random acts of, of enforcement. And that's what this new policy is.
When this question came up, Mr. Cook, we talked about the student handbook and we talked about the information. And we did talk about, we don't, we don't do a fingertip test for a skirt. We don't do a fingertip test for, we don't get upset with girls if a bra strap is showing.
There are schools-
Would you stop interrupting me, please? Would you stop interrupting me, please?
When you are saying inaccurate information, I'm telling you, there are schools that still do a fingertip test. You're saying we don't do it, but we do.
Chris, to answer your question, I have spoken with administrators at all of our buildings to be sure that I was on solid ground related to some of this information. And you are correct that they're not following those policies because of the issues that you guys are discussing. So I've embarked on, actually started over the past couple of days engaging with our assistant principals about inconsistencies in enforcement and inconsistencies in policies. As I watched from our last policy meeting, I agreed with much of the language that was presented. I disagree that it's at a board policy level, that it should be an operational issue and that we need to be more directly, we need to be more or less punitive in our language for certain. And we're going down that road. I started that this week. I've gotten very far. I engaged with five of our female assistant principals, given that they would have a different perspective on this and they're in agreement with that as well. I'm meeting with them next week to finalize some of the input they have given. And we have used Portland Public's language as a baseline. That'll likely be presented to principals hopefully here in June to get their input as well. I am hoping to finish the work at the latest by August.
Board Chair, I would recommend that this policy move back to the policy committee after Mr. Cook comes up with this information.
I concur as a further discussion about that. Okay.
I'm not, I do have another question on the superintendent policy that's put forward. Some of the, the language, I think, was addressed by OSBA in that it's nebulous and hard to quantify. And it sounds like Amanda's going to do some additional work on that, which is great. I think before it goes before the board, I think that one needs to go back to the committee as well. Because I think there's a lot of questions yet to be answered, especially with what Amanda comes up with.
Were you, were you requesting that to go back to the committee?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion about the policies that have been presented? Okay, we have another action item, Summer Works Learn and Earn Contract. And this has Carla Gay's name on it. Carla, welcome to the party.
Thank you, Chair Peterson and Directors. Work Systems, Inc., or WSI, has been a partner for providing job readiness training and internships for a small group of Gresham Barlow School District students for several years. This year, with the addition of summer grant funds from the Oregon Department of Education, the district has expanded its partnership to offer stipends to 350 high school students who will do a combination of summer credit recovery and career-linked learning to earn up to $500 per week in a stipend. Students over the age of 16 who are behind in credits in order to be on track to graduate are being prioritized for recruitment. WSI will manage the stipends and student support for the career learning by hiring job coaches from community-based organizations such as ERCO, POIC, and Latino Network. The staff request authorization to approve a contract with WSI not to exceed 662,500 in support of stipends, job coaches, and associated administrative costs. And there you have it. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have about this. Given the size of the grant or the contract that we are asking to use, we needed, knew we wanted to present that to the board.
I have a question. I don't know what POIC is. What is that?
Portland Opportunities Industrialization Center. They are an organization that manages Rosemary Anderson High School, which is an alternative high school in, that we have a contract with in East County. It's a, an organization that supports folks in our historically black community in the Portland metro area.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve a contract with WorkSource Systems Incorporated, or WSI, not to exceed 662,500 dollars in support of the stipend, job coaches, and associated administrative costs.
I second that. Carla, thanks for setting that up.
Okay, so it's been moved by Matt, seconded by Myra, to approve a contract with Work Systems, Inc., not to exceed 662,500 dollars in support of stipends, job coaches, and associated administrative costs. Any discussion?
Rosemary Anderson's a great school. They do great work.
And ERCO is immigrant and refugee coordinating, coordinating organization, I think is what they're called. But ERCO, they're all culturally specific organizations that support some of, many of our students and families in our community in their own language and in their own culture.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I support it.
Okay, thank you, Carla.
Thank you. I, I just, can I say something, Chair Peterson, really quickly?
Please do.
I just want to thank the board for voting in favor of this. It is a single-source contract. This money, over $550,000, will go directly into the pockets of our students who need it the most to incentivize them to complete their credits. And this is equity in action because what we're doing here is prioritizing our most marginalized students with our resources and our partnerships to ensure that those students have the opportunities to complete high school in a timely manner and get the supports they need. And I just, I just want to, I know there's a lot of difficult conversations happening around equity in our district. And I appreciate those conversations. I really want to say this is a wonderful step in demonstrating that your intentions really support work of, the work for our students. So thank you very much.
Carla, I appreciate that students won't have to choose between helping their families and getting, finishing their education. They won't, they will be able to do both. Thank you.
And I, I agree. Thank you, Carla. I think following where our money goes and how it really supports our students and our most vulnerable population is really going to show where equity values lie.
Okay, our, our next discussion item is the superintendent search process. So the board took action on May 6, 2021 to accept Superintendent Dr. A. Catrice Pereira's letter of resignation effective June 30, 2021. In order to move forward with the superintendent search process, the board needs to create a timeline for the search process, declare the position vacant, and provide opportunity for board, for public input. And time has been set aside on the agenda for the board to discuss how they'd like to begin this process. And I, I want to start with, just a clarification with, with Sarah. We've, we've not declared the position vacant. Is that accurate? We've, we've taken none of those steps. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Sorry, my computer's being weird. That's correct. So the board did approve the letter of resignation, but they have not declared it vacant yet. So that would be a simple motion that you can make to, to clear that the position is vacant. Will be vacant as of June 30th, when her final date, or July 1st, I guess technically, her last date is June 30th.
Would there be any? Are, are there any circumstances in which the board would not declare the position vacant, even, even though she is departing? That's something I'd be happy to research.
Oh, sorry. I thought that James would be taking over. So technically, we have an interim. So that's, maybe I'm misunderstanding what that means.
Well, well, yeah, that, no, that's, that's a good clarification. James Hugh is the deputy superintendent. And so even over the last four years or as long as he served in this capacity, when Dr. Pereira is vacant from the district, Mr. Hugh is in that place. He serves in that capacity. So yes, my understanding is the board, taking no action is effectively Mr. Hugh serving in that capacity. But it's not an interim title. That's, again, my understanding, we would need to declare that that's what our intention is, is to identify an interim or a permanent replacement. But in effect, it's, it's a default while we sort out our process. It, it, Mr. Hugh does default to the position until we name something, some, somebody or some process differently than, than what he's fulfilling. Is that? If I'm out of turn, somebody can, can certainly correct me. So I, I would caution the board against declaring it vacant in this meeting. I think that we owe some, some clarity. I owe you some clarity, to be candid, about that. I, I think what we, what we owe is a bit of clarity. So I'm grateful that you, you brought that up, Amanda, because yes, Mr. Hugh serves in that capacity until board takes action. So if you hear nothing from us, Mr. Hugh is serving as superintendent when Dr. Pereira leaves. That said, we owe clarity to that process, both how to be publicly engaged in it and, and how we're going to solicit that engagement. So is there any, any discussion about this matter before we?
Yeah, I think it would be really wise to pull out the process that we took to get Dr. Pereira on board. I believe Director Howitt was very involved in that process. And I think it'll, there's not necessarily a reason to recreate the wheel sometimes, if you will. And I thought that was a very robust process that we followed when we did bring her on. Of course, I won't be making that decision, but I think that that was a good decision, or a good process in place that you can modify.
Matt, I think it'd be a great idea to learn from past processes. So I agree with you.
I'd like to see what it looks like before we work with it. I mean, I don't doubt it's bad. I would just like to look at it. I mean, I don't doubt, you know what I mean? I don't think it's-
I think what I, you know, I was hesitant when we put the process in place to go outside of the state to look for a superintendent, and it turned out to be a wonderful event. And so I think, you know, we brought the recruiter in and they provided us some very good candidates. And then the interview process was very well robust and then the public engagement was robust as well. And so, yes, I totally agree. You'd probably want to see that because you haven't seen it before. But it, it might be good to, I don't know when you would bring it up, the next meeting or, you know, leave it up to you folks. But because I won't be part of that process.
Yeah, there, is there other, other discussion? Okay, so I, I've heard from the board, they want to see the process that we deployed for Dr. Pereira. I, I know that Sarah's already gathered that information, so we'll get that distributed. The kind of a question seeking consensus of the board, is this something that you'd like to see a committee establish our, our process or propose our process even, even as quickly as our next meeting? Is there something you'd like to see a hasty committee formed?
Like a committee amongst the board or a committee amongst the community?
The board, just to clarify this process for, for the, for the whole of the board, to kind of bring out proposals, how have regional districts done this? How? What are the, are the choices in front of us that kind of a, that kind of a service to the board as a policy or as a, as a committee?
Yeah, I, I'd like to learn different processes, including our own, but I definitely want community.
Okay.
I'd be careful on this, just from the standpoint that the, so it doesn't sound like we're going to be moving forward very quickly on a superintendent, obviously. that the, so it doesn't sound like we're going to be moving forward very quickly on a superintendent, obviously. And so there'll be a reconstitution of the board. And I think that board needs to be taking action on it, not this board.
Okay.
Well, can those of us who are staying at least get it started?
That's just my recommendation. So I'm in.
Yeah, I, I would like to go with what Myra said. I mean, we're still going to be here. We can at least get it started.
Yeah. And definitely help onboard the new members.
Yeah, well, I, I I own that we've not progressed as, as quickly on this as it, it should have. And I want to clarify exactly why. We've had that luxury because of the stable of leadership that we have within the district. And I want to make sure that that's abundantly clear to the public. If this were a district in turmoil, we might not have that luxury that we've had to be deliberate about it and to establish our processes according to our timeline. And I'm, I'm personally very grateful to, to a lot of the folks that are in this room right now and in this meeting because of the leadership that we can rely upon because you're in the room. So with that, I'd like to ask Chris, Myra, and Amanda if you would entertain a serving on a, sort of a hasty committee to just evaluate regional partners as well as review Dr. Pereira's, the process that we, we use in order to come to Dr. Pereira's hire and, and inform the board.
Yeah.
What?
Yes, but not hasty. We're gonna.
Hasty only in your research, quick in your research so that the board can start making decisions that provide clarity for our community stakeholders. Yeah, not hasty and finding superintendent hasty and finding our process. Yes. How do you feel about that? Any discussion about that? Option? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to you three for, for stepping up in that way. Okay, our, our next discussion item is a, is a resolution that's been brought forward. And I want to, I want to clarify because this is a proposed resolution. There is, I believe, a, a date at the bottom of this, but resolutions are, are ratified by, by the board, by an action of the board, which we've not taken on this resolution. So that although there's a 6th of May date on the resolution, it, it has not been a resolution of the board yet. And that's what we're going to have discussion about. So this has come forward from, I've seen, I've seen Robin, I've seen your involvement. So I'll ask if you want to introduce it.
Sure. So this is a resolution for medically vulnerable educators. And what has happened throughout the process since I've been here is we've had our district staff saying that they would support our medically vulnerable educators. That is mean individuals that were supported by doctors' notes with recommendation not to go back to in-person learning because of medical, medical conditions. And what this was is to say that as a board, we support these individuals. We really want them to be safe. And regardless of what has been done through legally, through contract negotiations, that we understand the impacts and we disagree. And we want to keep our educators safe. Would you like me to read it?
No, thank you, Robin. We'll, we'll read it if it's approved. We, we can discuss specific elements of it. Anything to add, just as an introductory? Amanda, I don't know if you're a participant of kind of bringing this forward, but I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to introduce this as well. If, if you.
Um, there is still a lot of conversation, I think, that's going on between G B E A and our superintendent, our administrator, administration. In terms of like medically vulnerable employees, I feel like they're not being supported. I do think that needs to be looked into, but honestly, from where I'm at as a board member, I feel like I don't know the whole story. So.
Okay. Um, okay, well, this, this may be appropriate if, if somebody wants to move in second to bring it into our discussion and we can, again, kind of have a civil discussion about the resolution specifically and, and and then bring it to a vote.
I move to approve the medically vulnerable educators proposed resolution.
Sir, a second?
So is the, is G B E A having a conversation with administrators still to this day? I don't know what's going on.
That, what is going on is what we've received is the, you know, superintendent has agreed to move forward with conversations with G B E A. But what this proposal is, is just saying us as a board, we understand the impacts to these medical vulnerable educators. And we support them in opportunities to be able to work remotely as their doctors approve them.
So, so it's been, the resolution's been, to approve the resolution, it's been moved. Is there a second? Okay, then we'll not be discussing it. Okay, our next agenda item is date, time, and place of the 2021-22 board meetings. A policy B C, B C A requires the board to provide for the date, time, and place of its regular meetings for the fiscal year in July of each year. As part of the calendar development process, a draft schedule has been developed for board discussion and feedback. A proposed schedule will be prepared following this evening's work session and input from the board. The proposed schedule will be presented as a first reading on June 10, 2021, and for adoption on July 1, 2021. So this is a, in effect, a first reading. Is there any discussion about this?
The only one that I saw is the usual coming back from winter break. The meeting is, I believe, January 6. And that doesn't give a lot of time to get the material together since they're not supposed to work during winter break.
Yeah, is that something? Mr. Hugh, you're, you're standing in command right now. Is that something you would be able to review with, with the team to make sure it is also supportive of, of the staff?
Absolutely. We'll make a recommendation for you by the next meeting, next Thursday.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you for bringing it forward. All right. Future board agenda topics, we will doing our best to get the agenda items that are, that are in kind of layaway onto the, onto the slate. We've obviously had a lot that have had hit us in the last week and months. So I appreciate. Again, I appreciate the stability of the board. For announcements, June 3, we'll be having a board work session at 6:00 PM. Right now, we're going to plan that in person. June 3, we'll have a budget hearing. June 3, we'll have a regular board business meeting. So that's 6:00 PM, 6:45 PM, and 7:00 PM respectively. June 10, we have a board work session. And then the highlight of our year, June 15, 16, and 17, we'll be celebrating commitments. I encourage the board to review the schedule that was sent out to see if you have availability to, to be there in support of our students and their families. So that's, that concludes our agenda. So there being no other business before the board, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.